You're good.
Okay, thanks. So we will call the Meeting to Order Committee the whole April 28th. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Record of attendance, Lindsey has that. Absent with regrets, somebody want to make a motion to excuse Councilor Heather? Okay, Councilor Bell and Deputy Mayor, all those in favor? Contrary, motion carried, thank you. And declarations of conflict of interest, anyone, you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. We're good on that one for now. Perfect. Okay, approval of agenda, additions or deletions, I know we do have some things in camera. Go ahead, Councilor Daers.
Yes, I'd like to include the correspondence that was received from the municipality of Shelburne in regards to the non-resident tax increases. And I noticed that there's another letter from Chester as well, but I believe it's duplicate wording, so I think if we address one of these correspondence, that would be sufficient.
Good, so that's, I'm going to put that under 11B, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Bell. You're on mute, though.
No, we're good, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions? Okay, a motion to approve the agenda with that addition. Councilor Bell and Councilor Lesser, any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? Contrary, motion carried, thank you. So, just so you know, the 11A addition, the one Councilor Daers added is 11B, but we've added the dear management strategy composition, so. Okay, we don't have a presentation, staff report, CAO report. Any questions for the CAO with regard to what he's put forward? Guess we're good. Fire department report. I think Mike, yep, Mike is here, our chief is here. I see through the emails, Chief, that you continue to recruit, that's great news. Go ahead, Councilor Daers.
Mike is muted, I think he was trying to answer.
Oh, Mike did you-
Someday I'll get used to that, maybe someday, I'm lucky. I was just saying, we're doing really well with the recruitment so far, it's going well. Slow and steady, more targeted approach. And we're looking for that certain kind of, you know, male or female, obviously, so we're doing well.
Good stuff. Councilor Daers?
Yeah, just a quick question, Chief. I noticed in the quarterly report, there's like 38 incidents, I think, for the full-time staff, and that typically at the end of the year, it's around 280. Is it, which, are there quarters of the year that are significantly more active than others?
Yeah, generally, I would say normally, historically, this time of year is pretty busy with grass fires. That accounts for a lot of the spring numbers, as usual, but with our newer, younger population, they don't seem to have the energy to go out and light grass fires like they used to, so a lot less of those. And we get more in the fall, the chimney fire season, that sort of thing, when the heating, that, the heating season starts up, we get that sort of fire season, yeah. A lot of those incidents are starting to decrease with, like, heat pumps, those sorts of things are making a difference.
Well, let's hope for rain in the spring, then. Thank you.
So far, I'm very happy with the rain, yeah.
Good stuff, anything, go ahead there, Deputy.
Has there been much uptake with the outdoor fire pits or whatnot, have you?
We have, I think the guys have been out about, I'd say, five times, or might, there might be a total of six applications. I think there's one approved only so far, and there's like four in various stages. The guys go out and do a bit of a, you know, a site evaluation. And of course, there's a lot of homes that don't fit the requirements, so.
Thanks for that, just wondering, so.
Yep, you're welcome.
Keep up the good work, bud.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Chief? Are good, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Operations, and Chad's on, I see. Anything for operational? Go ahead, Councilor Lesser.
It's not about sidewalks or crosswalks. I apologize, my voice is still after four weeks not getting better. I have no idea what's happening, I still do not have COVID, but anyway, I apologize, my voice isn't great. Just wanted to thank Chad. I, after a year and a half or so of being on council, I finally realized I don't have to bring everything to council, and some quick things can be done with a quick email or phone call, so I've reached out to Chad a couple of times on things, and within like 20 minutes, they've been done. And people are very impressed when that, when that happens, so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
I'll second that one. Any questions for Chad? Anything you want to share, Chad, are you good?
Nope, I believe we're good.
Alrighty. Okay, that was easy. Planning and economic development, and Natalie is on. Any questions for Natalie? Oh, we're good. This is, this is, that's what happens when you have thorough reports, and they're actually read. Go ahead, Councilor Daers.
Well, I'm just wondering if Natalie had something that she'd like to bring to our attention.
Maybe in camera.
Okay, I'll buy that, thank you.
And can you, do you want to hang on for two minutes, Natalie in camera? And the emails we were doing- Yeah, great, go ahead, thanks Natalie.
Your worship, maybe Natalie would introduce Tony to council?
Yes, that would be great.
That would be my pleasure. So, we've hired a new planner. His name is Tony Morris, and I don't know if Tony wants to put on his camera so we can all see his face and smile. And Tony's been with us a couple of weeks, and he's already in the thick of it. And you'll see him at PAC, and I'm sure for their council meetings.
Perfect, welcome, Tony. So far, so good?
No issues so far.
Good stuff. Councilor Lesser? I don't know if I saw your hand wave, or you wanted to-
Just waving hi. That's it.
Any questions for Tony? Would anybody like to put our new planner on the spot? Okay, good, well, we're thrilled that you're with us. Think you're going to have a lot of fun, and it doesn't slow down, just so you know. If you go home one evening, you say, "I wonder if the pace slows," the answer would be no. Okay, good, thanks for that, Natalie.
He's got a killer view, so.
Oh, where's his view?
Should be on his back window, shouldn't it?
Oh, there.
Yeah, but if I lift that up, you can't see me.
That's why I have mine shut, too. I'm, I'm, think I'm just below you. Okay, engineering. Is Mark on? Oh, there's DiMario.
DiMario's on, yeah.
Awesome. Go ahead there, Councilor Cleveland.
Well, I just wanted to mention that I noticed this big boat over on the, on the harbor. I believe it was called the Cat. And I was kind of curious as to how close things are, more for the public than, than anyone else, but it is worth mentioning that the ferry terminal is very close to completion. And I was wondering, DiMario, if you could speak to that, and how close we are.
Sure, so right now, we, we're working through a number of finishing items that we have to do. Obviously, there may be one or two items that are a little further out, but those are all on schedule as far as we know. And I think that Mark and Luke are doing a very good job wrapping it up, and I think everybody will be pleased when it's done.
Good stuff.
Excellent, thank you, and-
Your worship, if I can jump in there, sorry, Counselor. I think I need to say publicly that Mark has done an absolute fantastic job with, with the largest infrastructure project that the town has taken on in many years. It was a very tight schedule, and of course, a whole lot riding on the success of getting it done on time. And with Luke, DiMario, with the entire team, with the contractor, with the cooperation and support of project managers at CBSA, the support of Bay Ferries, it's all coming together at the right time. And Mark could be the first to point at everybody, everybody else for the credit, but he truly deserves a huge thank you from the community for his leadership on this. So, I want to say that publicly, and, and I know, I know council knows that the impact he's had on that, but it needs to be said.
Absolutely.
Here, here.
So, we're good to go, gosh, less than a month.
Deep breath.
I just hope, I did a Weekender interview this past week, and, you know, just a reminder to folks that we need to be ready. And we had the big cleanup this weekend, which was, which was wonderful. I'm hoping that, you know, our restaurants will be open, because we have to play to our visitors. So, we're pretty excited to see everything come back, and we'll see what happens. Anything else for engineering, we're good? Okay, finance report, Jerry is on. Jerry, did you want to, we had a brief conversation around the, around budget talks. Did you want to give them a timeline, so, so council knows where we're headed?
Sure, so that's kind of what's tied up all of our time, so no report attached to the agenda. My update is, is all about budget. I'm hoping that before I leave here today, I'll have a digital package for council, that I'll get Lindsey to send out to you tomorrow. And I know she's going to try to book maybe our first meeting next week, either Wednesday or Thursday, if people are available. And we can have a discussion around that, so that's kind of where it is. So hopefully, tomorrow you'll have a package electronically, and we can meet next week.
Perfect. Go ahead there, Councilor Daers.
Yeah, just wanted to, I guess, telegraph a punch that Councilor Hatfield's not here today. But we anticipate that there will be a budget modification request from the Communities in Bloom Committee. So I just want you to know that that'll probably come out of the May 11th meeting. The meeting has been postponed in light of her, her eye surgery that she had to underwent today, so she's postponed it until next week, and, or until the 11th. But you'll probably get a request coming up from that committee for a modified budget.
Thanks for that. Okay, anything else for Jerry? So Jerry, do you want us to email you questions as we look that over? Just speak with you next week at the-
Either or, if you send me questions, I'll, you know, send, I guess, replies to, to everybody, so they know, they see the original question and any replies. But I'm hoping I can have a lot of notes in the package for you to answer obvious questions, anyway. But yeah, if you're looking for specifics, then for sure, because folks can send an email and I'll reply.
Perfect, thanks. Anything else for Jerry? Thanks for hanging in there, I know this time of year is busy, busy.
It's busy, but we're, we're getting through it.
Yep, you are. Great staff, so, thanks. Okay, Yarmouth Recreation, and I see that Frank is on, any questions for Frank? Go ahead, Deputy.
I noticed Frank was up to the school last week, handing out some applications and hopefully getting some kids to apply. I'm just wondering if there's any, any more influx from your efforts. I know I pushed a few and handed them out and tried to get them handed in, and hopefully that worked out in your favor.
Yes, I think everyone was waiting for the deadline, so the deadline was on the 22nd, and we had a flurry come in, which was good. But it was good to get out and talk to some kids at the school, and we did extend our deadline to the end of this week. So, in the process of setting up interviews and getting ready for a busy summer, we did very well, all 19 summer positions got funding from Canada Summer Jobs, so that's just under $36,000 in funding for summer student employment. Just found out today that we received $11,800 for Canada Day celebrations. And one thing I did want to mention, I've mentioned it before, but I didn't want to spill the beans, but excited for Nova Scotia Communities on the Move. Yarmouth Town and Municipality have been selected as one of the province's seven most active communities. And we haven't done a big hubbub announcement on that yet. We're working with the Communities Culture and Heritage on some training sessions. We, the province has seconded Ellen Kerr from Minnesota, who has done leaps and bounds in active living and active transportation and walking programs. And so we're, we're going, the, the seven communities are going through a series of meetings. But stay tuned, when we do announce it, it'll be a big hubbub with a big event happening. And I'm very excited for this project over the next three years on, on trying to get people moving more, doing some new and creative things, and yeah, it's, it's going to be a great, great project to see move forward.
Good stuff. Councilor Bell?
Frank, thank you, your worship. Just, just wanted to, I'm doing the math in my head with regard to the positions and the amount of money. So I'm assuming that that is, like, the, the amount of money, the 36,000, that's just like, that's the cost shared part, is it? Do we, we make a contribution as well, obviously, yeah, okay.
We, we, because we're a municipality, we qualify for 50, 50% of minimum wage. And some of our jobs are longer than nine weeks, so we do compensate there. But all those jobs are funded at 35 hours a week for nine weeks.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at business, Citizen Appointment Process Policy. The recommended motion there is to recommend the council accept the proposed amendments to the Citizen Appointment Process Policy. So I admit I read it, but I didn't see anything in red, unless I read the wrong one, but I don't think I did.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't set out in color, but I think the main thing that, that is changing in that policy is that the committees are responsible for nominating and running the process themselves. Or if you recall, we talked about that
Yes.
At the last, I think, last council meeting, so. So that's, that's it, it's not a, it's not a significant change, but it's a significant change, I think, towards renewing our committees on a, on a regular basis with, with the involvement of the committees and funding their successors.
Perfect. Go ahead, Councilor Cleveland.
I just wanted to say, this is one that I've been paying close attention to, because A, citizen appointments are so important, and B, I strongly feel, and in, in the committees that I've worked with, that the committee should have that process. So I, I, when I saw that the policy was out, I looked at it with a little bit of trepidation for fear that, I don't know, I wasn't sure what I was expecting, but I wanted to say kudos, because it's exactly what I was looking for and hoping for in the approach. So, thank you, thank you very much, it's, it's a good approach. And I'm really kind of excited that, that it's now becoming policy. And if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to accept those amendments.
Okay, second by Councilor Daers. Further discussion on this one? Go ahead, Deputy.
I just like that the rules aren't tight enough to bind, and it still gives each committee kind of their, their own idea to, you know, stay in line with what they see, you know, is kind of what they want to do. And sometimes we do these things, and they're so strict, they, they don't give respect to those, you know, different spots, different things. And this keeps it open enough, but still, you know, within some kind of protocol that allows us to still push what we want. And I like the part that it does come back to us to approval as well, that, you know, we do have a say at the end to who it is that are going to represent us on these different committees. So, job well done to staff on that.
Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, Lindsey doesn't like to have her camera on, and doesn't like to speak a lot, but this is her work. I want to make sure you know that. And oftentimes, when we get into policy and bylaw review, she does a lot of work, but again, doesn't, doesn't necessarily turn on the camera and speak from the microphone. But just wanted to acknowledge that, call it out.
Thanks, Lindsey. Okay, so that motion is on the floor, are there any more comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Jim McLeod Memorial. So I, I sent, there's nothing attached, but I did send out a photo to council, and with the measurements and everything else. So, I'm just in close contact with, with his family, and looking to, you know, rename, rename the square and put that monument in, and the weather is clearing up, so it's going to be a great time to do that. We just wanted the weather to settle. So, I'm just wondering, any concerns, anything like that, CAO, did you take a peek at that? Do we have any, we just want to make sure, and this is from the family as well, just to make sure that, you know, the monument is in a place that, you know, doesn't block anything, but is, it's in a place where certainly people can, can see it and remember.
Your worship, I did have a look at the, at what was sent around, and I think it's a suitable monument, as I'm sure the family, the family feels. And I think it's a very appropriate place for it. I think it's going to be something, something special for the community.
Yeah. All right, so I need a motion to okay the monument. Okay, Councilor Daers, second by Councilor Cleveland. Any, any more discussion on that? I'll get back to the family, and we'll choose a date, make sure folks are available, and that, that the community knows, because certainly the community will want to be there. Go ahead, Deputy.
I just think it's important that, you know, that this is coming from the family. This isn't something that we kind of stepped up and said that we see our vision. You know, definitely everyone at the table 100% supports it, but at the end of the day, it's nice that this is their vision, and it's glad that we, you know, we all get to enjoy it, and, you know, show some respect to Father Yarmouth himself. So, glad to get this rolling, and I can't wait to see it there.
Thanks, Deputy, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, because I, I think every single one of us has received, there's no shortage of suggestions. There was no shortage of suggestions. And this, the most important thing, as you, as you said, was to make sure that it did come from the family. And, you know, I've been in contact with them from day one, so this is, this is family-driven, simply supported by us, and we're good to go, so. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Noise bylaw amendments regarding fireworks. So that recommended motion, we've seen that. Direct staff to prepare amendments to the noise bylaw that would A, ban the use of consumer fireworks within the town of Yarmouth, except on Canada Day and New Year's, New Year's Eve, and require signage be displayed at retail displays of fireworks informing consumers of the ban. So I have a question. Do we have the right to, when we put the, the signage up, I know that we've done this for different things, garbage bags and things like that, you know, but can we, can we do that outside of town, like anywhere that fireworks are sold? We can only do it within town?
Your authority is only within the town of Yarmouth. Now, we could, we can ask vendors outside of the town if they, if they would be willing to display the signage, the same signage, just to inform consumers. Because the last thing you want is, is a resident of the town to be, you know, out in Dayton, or out in Tuscan, or wherever they might find fireworks, spend, you know, maybe hundreds of dollars, with all good intentions, only to find out, get themselves in trouble in town when they, when they, when they use their fireworks. So, at the point of, of purchase, if we can have a sign, you know, they may be quite willing to, because I don't think the, I don't think the vendors are necessarily going to want to lead people astray. Certainly within town, it would be required under the bylaw, and, you know, that's sure, to some degree, people are aware that, that there are limitations. Now, if I may speak to the first recommendation, which is to ban, and I did recommend two exceptions. One is, is Canada Day, and the other one is New Year's Eve. Those were two of the, of the days that the city of Halifax had made the exception. I didn't go any further than that, and that there's no magic associated with those dates as far as fireworks go. So if it's council's desire to add other dates or occasions, certainly that is your, that is well within your right to do so. I just felt that we'd start, start there and start the discussion.
Okay, as there was a little bit of concern around religious holidays or, or days, so Councilor Daers, you go ahead.
Yeah, exactly, I think we've already discussed that there's, at times where there could be cultural activities that take place where fireworks might be appropriate. I'm wondering if there can't be some kind of a, a permit issued for special occasions? And, and that might include, for example, the fireworks that take place during Natal Day. You know, we don't, we don't, you know, they have, they have the boat parade during Seafest is, that can exclude the, those fireworks. So I wonder if we, if we shouldn't look at it a little bit differently and include the dates that are most typically where fireworks are set off as a municipal celebration, but also those that include cultural activities or religious activities where fireworks might be appropriate, but, but by permitting only.
Okay.
So, your worship, if I could respond to that, I am recommending against a permit-based system. Part of the reason is, is that with a permit-based system, the, the only ones who necessarily know about the permit are the town of Yarmouth and the permit holder. And part of the issue that we're trying to deal with is the unexpected fireworks display. So, if, if council is interested in, in Natal Day, specific religious holidays, you know, I don't know religious holidays where fireworks are, are associated, but, you know, that, somebody else may, and if they can inform us, or you can inform me, we can work those into the bylaw. If they, if they fall consistently on a, you know, I don't know, the first Tuesday in November kind of thing. Then, again, if they're permitted, just, and we could, even to the counselor's point, the, the parade of sale event during, during Seafest, we could specifically call that out in the, in the bylaw as a permitted event. That doesn't mean, now, I should say this, too, is, it, those are consumer fireworks. So yeah, it's probably best to call out that event, and, and any others that you want, right? This isn't meant to, to stifle civic celebrations, the celebration of holidays. It's meant to deal with the unexpected, suddenly, I'm disrupted, my life, I didn't prepare my cat, I didn't prepare my dad, and, and now I've got chaos in my house because there's an unexpected fireworks event.
Yeah, and that's, so Bell and then Wade, that's, that's the whole point, right? The animals, and, and a lot of people reaching out about, you know- And, um, and a lot of people reaching out about, you know, family members with PTSD and, you know, just medically, it's, it's really difficult. So we have to protect these folks. Go ahead, Councilor Bell, and then Councilor Cleveland.
I think if I'm correct, that this came before council in November-ish uh, due to fireworks that were being set off in association with the Hindu celebration of Diwali. So there is one religious occasion to start with. That's, that's if I recall, what started this, this most recent examination of the fireworks bylaw. Um, I don't want to be in a position where we are as a town, um, you know, creating constraints on people's religious freedom to celebrate, but I also am cognizant of the concern about, uh, unintended consequences of setting off fireworks without notice. Would it be too complex if there was language that required notification of neighbors? And would that be helpful? I, I, I'm just asking the question as to how could we get around that?
So, so if, if I may try to answer that, so I wasn't, I wasn't familiar with this holiday, but as, as you said, I quickly Googled it and, and I, and I see. So, um, you know, that's good information. So H R M included, you know, religious holidays as, as a permitted time within, within their bylaw. We could do exactly the same thing. And, and the onus comes on us to become aware of, of, of these celebrations. And with Mike Carter's assistance, uh, in communications, like we know, I'll just use an example, we know when July 1st is coming. Every year we know when it's coming. And we can tell people, we can have scheduled, planned communications the week before, just reminding people that July 1st is a day when consumer fireworks are permitted and you may hear them in your neighborhood. Just, you know, care for your pets and, and, and others who are disturbed or upset by, by the loud bangs. You know, so again, we can add to that list of times that we send out those notifications. Because like myself, who was unaware of this particular celebration, um, you know, if I read that, I would know.
Well, it's just that we increasingly live in a diverse community and, and, um, you know, I, I just want to be, I want the council to reflect that to the, to the extent that we're able. Um, the other question that I had quickly was just with regard to enforcement, um, what would the mechanism of enforcement be in this case? A, a complaint would have to be filed, I assume, by a nearby resident or?
Yeah. That, that's another, that's, that's an issue. So, uh, if a complaint is made or, you know, in the evening, these things tend to be shot off after dark. We don't have bylaw enforcement officers, you know, uh, at the ready. So it comes down to, to the R C N P. And, uh, now they may not be available, right? Uh, at, in the moment to come and put an end to the show. But if a complaint is made, they could investigate it. You know, if somebody made a complaint, they could provide the information to the R C N P. They may investigate it and find that somebody, uh, shot off the, some fireworks outside of the permitted time. I would suggest that at early days, this would be an education opportunity because it's after the fact. And it's a matter of, you know, letting the community know. But at the end of, at the end of the day, through the noise bylaw and the noise restrictions, there is a mechanism to issue a $237 fine. Um, my suggestion is, is that, uh, if you, if you, if the, if an investigation is carried out, somebody's educated about the bylaw, there's probably no fine issued. But if there's a different reception and a repeat, uh, event, then, you know, that's when, that's when unfortunately the ticket book might have to come out. But that's where we are as far as resources for enforcement.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Cleveland.
Thank you, your worship. Um, yeah, the first thing that came to mind with me was the, uh, the, um, Seafest Festival of Lights, which happens, you know, I mean, we've had COVID issues, of course, over the last while, but that's the one that came to mind because that is consumer fireworks. Uh, Diwali, I was aware of, but wasn't aware that we were firing off or, or that that was the, the reason why the fireworks was being fired off back in the day. More than anything, the intention of this is to stop those, you know, 11 o'clock on a Tuesday night, you're awakened by the sound of what you could be gunfire, could be fireworks kind of a situation. And we had been dealing with that. I know I certainly have been or had been in my neighborhood over quite a lot of time. So that is the intention, but I, I would want to make sure that things like Seafest and, and if, if Diwali is a, is a proper time, then we certainly want to look at that as well.
So we can, I mean, to, to Jeff's point, to get Mike to do a little bit of, you know, public education and, you know, drawing folks out to help us understand what, what they may need. Um, es- especially with regard to the cultural piece. We certainly don't want Canada Day and Nadel Day and, and, um, you know, the Parade of Lights. We want to be able to, to do that. So Jeff, what are you suggesting? That we're listing things where?
So I, I would suggest, uh, much as H R M has, uh, add recognized religious holidays. And, uh, again, we'll have to educate ourselves on, on that. Um, include the Seafest Parade of Lights specifically as an event. And, uh, were there others, uh, was Nadel Day mentioned? Is, was that one that we wanted to add or was there other ones?
There was Nadel Day, there was the Parade of Lights, Canada Day, New Year's Eve, Tuesdays.
So we, we can add those, that there is, um, so these would all come with the new, uh, provision that would go into the bylaw specifically addressing fireworks. Um, there is a place in the bylaw where the C A O can issue a, a permit exempting, uh, from the noise prohibit, prohibition generally within the bylaw. If you wish, we can extend that authority to also exempting a firework. So it's not so much a permit as it is issuing an exemption. So not a routine permitting process for, uh, you know, because Suzie's turning 11 on Tuesday, we want to fire off some fireworks.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilor Dairs.
Yeah, I just wanted to say there was a, like a brief barrage of fireworks in, just in our neighborhood, uh, within the last couple of nights. Uh, not that it disturbed me much, but, but I understand that, that other neighbors might take it, uh, a different way, but, um, is there any way to include language that, um, and I hate to leave things open-ended, but other events as may be identified that, uh, you know, and, and could be approved by the C A O? Um, and that, you know, some, some advertising or some, uh, prior notice be issued? So, I mean, we, we've, we've talked about the ones that we're aware of, but there may be one or two out there that we're not aware of.
So we can, we can provide, we can provide that, extend the exemption that the C A O can issue uh, from just general noise to also include fireworks. We'll work some language in on that. And again, that wouldn't be something that I would be tempted to do on a fireworks situation the day of because of the, the issue of notification and preparation. So we, we'll do that and it won't be, as I say, it won't be a general, uh, come one, come all process, but for special events, uh, you know, that, uh, they want to include that, then, then we'll, the mechanism will be there. So we can do what we'll do. Uh, if you want to recommend with the, with the additional, um, uh, holidays and exemptions that we've discussed, uh, then we'll prepare the bylaw amendment for council for May.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so did we make a motion?
Don't think so.
Okay. All right. So we're good to go then. We don't need to. Do you want a motion to direct staff?
A motion to, to direct staff or to recommend to council the, uh, amendments to the noise bylaw with the additional uh, holidays and events, uh, identified, um, as well as an additional exemption provision for, specific to fireworks.
Perfect. Okay. Councilor Dairs, second by Councilor Bell. Any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we see we have some correspondence there that we've, there's no action needed. Additions, 11A Deer Management Strategy Working Group Composition.
So your worship, this is a general, um, uh, outline of the, uh, deer management strategy working group that the town of Truro has used successfully. Uh, I've taken, removed their names and inserted ours in terms of the counselors who have been appointed. Uh, myself, our communications person, I think is very important to have on the committee. Um, there will be a staff lead and I'm pretty close to identifying who that will be. Uh, a recording secretary. Uh, the, the community in Truro, uh, included a representative from the local First Nations community, which I think is an important step. Um, they had two representatives of lands and forestry, which I think we should also seek to have, uh, you know, wildlife experts on our committee.
Natural resources?
I think it's lands and forestry.
Okay. No, I just didn't know if they had, they renamed some of the departments.
Okay, well, they may, I may be out of date, but, uh, the, whichever department's responsible for wildlife, how's that?
Ah, that works.
And, uh, uh, two hunters, uh, in, in the case of Truro, uh, there, there actually was a, there's a Women That Hunt, uh, group. So they, they specifically recruited a hunter from that group as well as a hunter from the general community. I think if we're so lucky is to have the diversity apply for, for membership, uh, on any of these spots, I think we should seek it. And of course, three citizens at large is what Truro had, and they don't have to have, you know, any knowledge of deers. Maybe they're people who are knowledgeable about the impacts of deer in the community, or maybe they're, they're deer lovers who are concerned that whatever we do, we do, that is, that is humane and, 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 uh, want to keep an eye on us that way. So, uh, that's the composition that Truro had, and I'm recommending that you adopt that as the composition of our deer management strategy working group.
Okay, go ahead there, Councilor Dairs.
Yeah, just because I, I'm absolute, I'm on the, I'm going to be in that working group and I have absolutely no knowledge of the efficiency of bow hunting. I think at least one of the people on that committee as a hunter should be somebody that's proficient in that particular realm.
We can be specific about that when we're recruiting, that, uh,
Absolutely. Okay, anyone else on this one? Okay, so what do you need from us, Jeff?
Just a, a motion to recommend to council that this be the, um, that this be the composition.
Okay. Are you good, Gil? Yeah, okay. All right. So, so the motion is, is that this is the composition of the working group? Okay, Deputy Mayor? Second by Councilor Dairs.
I'd just like to point out that I, I have a delayed reaction and that's why the hand kept going up and down.
It's all good. Okay, go ahead, C A O.
Your worship, just for clarity, I, I, maybe I'll ask, ask Councilor Dairs, do you want us to change the language in here to say licensed bow hunter as, as opposed to just hunter?
I think it would be important to have, if you're going to have, well, I don't know, if you're going to have more than one hunter on the, on, in the working group, then I, I think at least one person should be somebody that is, um, I'd like to know about the, the art of bow hunting.
So let's change the wording so that it's clear that, that there's a specific, at least one, maybe two of the spaces are licensed bow hunters.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, good. With that minor change, everybody good to vote? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, 11B, the non-resident tax. Go ahead, Councilor Dairs.
So I'm hopeful that, uh, that everyone's had an opportunity to review the correspondence that was received from the municipality of Shelburne and, and then, I, I think probably identical correspondence from the municipality of Chester, but, I have some grave concerns about the province issuing or taking over the responsibility for property taxes. And, um, I'm a little concerned that, you know, a 5% transfer tax uh, to non-residents who purchase property here, if they don't move here in six months, 5% property tax is, is a pretty hefty chunk of change. And, um, the, you know, the province is estimating 80 million, 81 million dollars in revenues in the first year from these two tax increases. And I, I, I read through Minister McMaster's, uh, defense of the, of the tax increases and, but honestly, it wasn't sold. So I, I think I share the same concerns that Shelburne and, and Chester have voiced and, um, I'm wondering if we shouldn't be considering, um, similar correspondence to the minister.
So, um, so a couple of things. I, I think maybe a, um, staff look at how this would affect us. Because it will, we just need to know to what degree. Um, there was a meeting last night, uh, N S F M, the mayor's and warden's call, it wasn't on, but I was briefed. And there were concerns there as well, that N S F M take this on. I'm not, um, not so much a fan of that. I think we can, N S F M doesn't have to fight all our battles for us. But yeah, those are, I mean, it's, it's concerning, but we need to know, before we do anything, we need to know how does this affect us as well. So that would be a little bit of staff work. Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland. I think it's on your hand.
Um, actually, I, all due respect, I, I agree with Gil. And I, I, what I was going to say is the exact opposite of what you were going to say, uh, your worship, in that, uh, in going to N S F M next week, I'm sure it's going to be, at the very least, a topic of discussion that's going to be discussed at, at length. And I would like to be a part of that discussion before I go any further. Um, but I, I do believe that this is something of, of great concern. Uh, personally and otherwise, I think that this is probably, well, I, I won't go any further than that because I don't need to, uh, give my opinion here of, of that particular piece of legislation. But, uh, I, I think it's something that needs to be discussed. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilor Bell?
Uh, without, without getting into the merits of the province getting involved in property taxation, uh, which I thought was sort of a municipal, that is kind of the way municipalities uh, raise money and provide the service of the municipal services that we're responsible for providing. So when you're talking about $80 million, that's $80 million of property taxation that we aren't, that isn't accessible to us to levy. Regardless, you know, regardless of whether we would or not, I mean, if, it just, it just makes it very difficult. Um, the concern I have is the lack of appreciation of what value our non-resident property owners bring to our communities. And although in the town of Yarmouth, we don't have a preponderance of individuals who are non-resident and coming here as summer visitors, for instance. But every single summer resident who has property in Yarmouth County is coming into Yarmouth every day that they're here and they're spending money in our community. They are forging friendships in our community. They are getting involved in volunteer activities in our community. They are enriching the fabric of our community. And, um, so that, that really is a concern for me, even though as an urban municipality, uh, you know, maybe we, you know, we don't have a lot of, of cottage owners in, in the town of Yarmouth, but we benefit from their existence. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that the policy was really well thought out. And it would be interesting to have a look at what the ramifications are on us both directly in terms of taxation, but also those soft costs. So, yeah.
Yeah, good. Councilor Daers?
Yeah, I think, my fear is that this is the thin edge of the wedge. And, you know, I think maybe the provincial government needs to be reminded that they're there to serve the municipalities, not vice versa.
Yeah, I think it is vice versa, though, that's the problem. We are creatures of the province, sadly. They write the rules and we follow them, except in this case, the only, and I say only, but our main means of bringing in revenue, and we're always struggling to find new ways to bring in revenue, they just, they just took some of that away from us. Not that we would do that, right?
In other words, they set the rules and now they're changing the rules.
Exactly, yeah.
That's my concern.
Yeah, and, and I think, I mean, I think we all share the same concern. I think we're all on, is, is anybody thinking differently that might want to share some thoughts? I, I think we're all on the same page. I just want to know before, you know, so if we're going to NSFM, for example, I don't know who's going, but a couple of us are going, you know, the ability to say, this is, this is where, where we are as a town, you know, does it affect us? And to Bell's point, not just the properties that are in town, because there are, there's quite a few, and that ability for people to come in. Now, some people will say, you know, his, I don't know what his plan was, but was it to take, you know, people that are coming here for three months out of the year and making sure that somebody's living in those properties for 12 months out of the year? Right? So they're still in town and in the area for 12 months versus three months. So I don't know what the, what the idea was, but it wasn't pretty. So what would we like to do? Councilor Daers, I'm going to leave that to you because you brought it up. Go ahead, Jeff, and then Gil might have an idea how it wants to go.
Yeah, I know it was raised that we could, we could look at this. One of the exemptions, the tax, it's easy, easy enough for us to go into the residential tax rule and see where bills are going out of province and, and, you know, look at the exemptions. Well, you're exempt from the property tax if, if it's more than three dwelling units. So we can, we can tell that from the tax rule and we can remove those from the list. But then there's an exemption if it's continuously leased for 12 months or longer to an individual and the individual resides in the property and pays rent. So a residential property can be owned by a non-resident and occupied by a full-time resident and be exempted from this tax. So that's something that we don't necessarily have data on at the town of Yarmouth. So we could give you a worst-case scenario, but we really truly can't give you very specific in terms of what the, what the full extent of this would be within our town. We don't have many cottages, though, we know that.
Yeah.
A lot.
Okay, so what do you think, Gil?
Thanks, I do understand that. And my concern is not so much, because I, I don't think this is really going to have a huge impact on the town of Yarmouth. And that's not my concern, my concern is that it sets a precedent, I think, and not a good precedent. And I think, as I said, it's the thin, thin edge of the wedge, and if we relinquish the ability to levy property taxes to the provincial government, which is, I think, what's being asked of us, then we, it's going to have a greater impact on our neighbors, obviously, and we should be concerned for them as well. I do think that perhaps Councilor Cleveland has the right idea. Let's take this to the UNSM and have the discussion so we know what the other municipal units are thinking. But, you know, even though it's going to have less of an impact on an urban community, I think we still need to be concerned about it.
Okay, so what do we want to do?
I'd be happy to table this for one month, just to allow some input from the UNSM, or the NSFM, sorry.
Okay. See which way they're going to go? Okay, are we good, Jeff? Do we need a motion to table? Okay, so Gil's making that motion to table. Anyone want to second that? Okay, Councilor Bell? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so that's the additions. Are we good? That's it? Except for in camera? Go ahead, deputy? Oh, yes, deputy.
Yes, whereas yesterday was administrative, or Miss Administrative Professionals Day, just a shout out to our staff who do a great job year-round. We appreciate them, not just on this day, but definitely a shout out to them. So just wanted to, I know I don't speak on behalf of council, but I'm sure we all agree they do a great job and thank you for the job that they do each and every, every day for us.
Thank you. I think we all agree on that one. Okay, a motion to go in camera, please. I was going to keep Natalie for sure, and was somebody else here that I needed to keep? Who made the motion to go in camera? Okay, Councilor Lesser and Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? Contrary?